One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our mission is to educate, empower, and inspire excellence. All board members, we're provided with background information on the items on the agenda this evening in preparation for tonight's meeting. Our meeting is being livestreamed. We do have other public comment forums available for anyone at the end of the meeting, anyone who would like to discuss any topic of their choosing. Again, please grab one of the forums, fill it out, and return it to the board table, and we will bring you up at the appropriate time. We'll begin our meeting this evening. I see we do not have any student staff presentations with our superintendent's consent agenda, which contains our personnel report for March 20th, our donations report, and our claims report, as well as a facility use request report. Do you have a motion to approve the superintendent's consent agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
You have a motion, second. Any discussion?
I have a comment and a thank you to all the teachers who served as mentors. Once again, it's included in this report, in our personnel report, there are 21 teachers that served as mentors. So I just want to say thank you for sharing your expertise, your knowledge, and your passion for not only teaching students, but teaching teachers.
You're good, thank you. Any other comments or discussion? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Finley.
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez.
Yes.
Trustee Maleta.
Yes.
Trustee Williams, yes. Trustee Wilkie.
Yes.
Next, we have our board's consent agenda with our meeting minutes from the March 13th discussion meeting. And that's it. We have a motion to approve the board's consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Vasquez.
Yes.
Trustee Maleta.
Yes.
Trustee Williams, yes. Trustee Wilkie.
Yes.
Trustee Finley.
Yes.
Okay, moves on to board development. Are there any committee reports this evening?
Just wanted to give a legislative update. I had to mess with Trustee Vasquez for a minute there. State by annual budget continues to be one of the high topics of discussion right now. And last Friday, the Indiana School Board Association put out a couple of things and some analysis for us to look at. As some of the amendments are taking place, they're adjusting in real time for us to think about our tuition support simulation. There's something out there for us to look at, an LSA analysis for us to review, as well as estimates of the cost for school corporations to provide textbooks to students in fiscal year '24, which is under the House task budget right now. So that is a hot topic of discussion, is what's going to happen specifically with the budget. The next hot topic relates to the K-12 school funding subcommittee, something that came out of Senator Appropriations. And our Indiana School Board Association announced a proposal to create a teacher retention and support services grant program to help address the classroom teacher shortages. It's not just for the Indiana School Board Association, but there were others that joined this initiative, and it was also the school board, sorry, the superintendent's group, as well as the school business officials group, all that put together a proposal, and the psychologists, as well as the counselors. So we're going to see what the legislators think about that particular initiative and the proposal that was shared with us last week. Another key bill activity that we need to be on the lookout for relates to Senate Bill 321, and that's around student health. There are some other undue mandates, well, it's not even undue. There's no one who supports these mandates that they want to put towards us, and it relates to having, before a student is in crisis, they want the school officials to do as much as they can before you call out an ambulance or medical supports to be able to help the students. So those are undue mandates, and you just can't afford to be able to support that because the nurses already have a lot of things that they need to do under the Indiana Department of Education. So that is another key bill and activity that's being watched this week. And also that the student's high school transfer should no longer include information about students' immunizations records, so that's something else that's being considered. And then the last one relates to FASFA. The amended bill is the Senate Bill 167, it requires seniors to complete the FASFA unless the student parents submit a form declining to complete the application. Yet again, that is another one that we're not sure how principals and school counselors are going to be able to manage this, but just know that the bill passed out of committee by a vote of 11 to 1 last week. So those are some things, and we expect that it will get intensified as we approach the end of the session. We're supposed to wrap up on April the 29th.
Great, thank you. Any other board reports?
Yes, I have one. The Portage Township Food Pantry, that meeting was canceled this month, and we scheduled for April the 18th. However, both Casper did provide us with some information. The pantry received a total of over $3,000 in cash donations, and expenses were about over $4,000. The total number of individuals that were served, 328, and there were 44 new clients. In January, there were 27, so you could see the increase of clients that have come to the Food Pantry for assistance. I just want to remind everyone that the Food Pantry is a nonprofit organization that provides food assistance to the Portage Township residents every month. The pantry is open from 10 till 12 o'clock noon on the first, second, and fourth Thursdays of the month, and on the third Thursday of the month, it is open from 4 until 6. So we thank the volunteers who collect the food donations and operate the pantry. If you need any information about the Food Pantry, the location is at 3590 Willow Creek, and you may contact the trustee's office for more information, either on the website, or Facebook, or you can go in person to the trustee's office, which is located there on Willow Creek. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Great recording. Any other reports?
Yes, the Portage Township Education Foundation met. They are holding their jovial jeans fundraiser this week, in which staff can wear jeans all week for $5. I'd like to thank my fellow board members and Attorney Elwood for all participating. The grant deadline for submissions was on March 3rd. We received 30 grant applications, and they are all being graded at this time, and the winners will be announced next month.
Great, thank you. Any other reports? Great, thank you. Next, we do not have any old business, we'll move on to new business. We have the approval to suspend the two readings for policy 8510.
Yes, the Wellness Committee met and have made some changes to this policy that needs to be approved and posted on our website prior to April 10th, 2023, or at least on that date. That gives our next regular meeting, and in order to make certain that we have that up prior to the date would make all of us most comfortable. So obviously, our normal board process is that there's a first and second reading, and after that second reading is the approval. However, again, this would not allow for the changes to be made in the timelyest of manners. So I did reach out to Julie Slavens at the Indiana School Board Association for her direction, and also confirmed what she was suggesting with Attorney Elwood. So although we follow our own bylaws, we do have in there that when there needs to be changes, that we need to go through this process. So the board can suspend the two reading requirement with a motion to suspend the two readings for a specific policy. It would only be for this specific policy before considering the policy. And of course, that motion would need to be seconded and adopted. I'm asking the board to make that motion in second, in order to approve us, approve the waiver of the bylaw for policy 8510. Attorney Elwood, is there anything additional that I'm leaving out here?
No.
The only other thing I'd like to mention is, I did also share this with our Portage Association of Teachers President, and she was aware that this was coming before. She did review the policy, she understood why we would be suspending the second reading in order to comply.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve to suspend the rules on two readings of policy 8510?
Make a motion.
Second.
You have a motion, second. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Maleta.
Yes.
Trustee Williams, yes. Trustee Wilkie.
Yes.
Trustee Finley.
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez.
Yes.
Okay, so now we move on for the approval of the wellness policy updates.
So this is the very second reading that you suspended, so that you can now consider the policy, and you can get that actually well in advance onto our website.
Do we have a motion to approve the wellness policy updates?
Make the motion to approve.
Second.
You have a motion, a second. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Williams, yes. Trustee Wilkie.
Yes.
Trustee Finley.
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez.
Yes.
Trustee Maleta.
Yes.
Next, we have our approval of the MOU with the Portage Police Department and Portage Township Schools.
So the MOU attached is a collaborative document that has been updated. Of course, Attorney Elwood can speak directly to this, as he worked with the city's attorney, Attorney Whitton. This is also, it should be noted that we are now going to also include through our rotational program, officers into our elementary buildings as well. So this will mean that we'll have positions throughout the week that there will be at least one officer a day at the elementary level circling throughout our elementaries as an additional presence.
Great, thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the MOU with the Portage Police Department and Portage Township Schools?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
You have a motion, a second. Any discussion?
I'd like to say thank you to those officers, SRO. We have one former SRO with us that is a board member, and the relationships that they serve is incredible. And the fact that their presence is going to be at the elementary, at the buildings, at the elementary level, make me feel so much more appreciative, knowing that it's the safety that's involved. However, our young people need to see and have relationships with the police department and with folks that are there to make us safe, make them safe. So I just, I'm looking forward to the students and seeing what their reactions and the see them, and the relationships that will be developed. That, to me, is really key.
I could maybe piggyback that a second. When they first put it out, there was, I believe, at least 10 officers that had expressed interest, and these would be officers that are working on their off time, so to have that amount of officers working shows a large commitment from the PD and the officers themselves, so just thought that was important to mention.
I do have a question. At one time, did the city help fund? Some of the SROs, they're not doing that anymore?
So we are currently, I did go and check back, we are currently working in collaboration. Those things have been taken care of, so we are okay with that.
We are, okay.
Yes, yes.
No, is that me, or you?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I think this is great. I think it's awesome to reiterate what we've already heard, and again, I just give credit where it's credited. Stu, thank you, Dr. Allen, as I know, you've worked hard with Chief Candiano on increasing the number of Portage Police Officers in our schools. I also want to give credit to Trustee Williams, who, when he joined this board, that was a priority for him to get that done. So, you know, thank you for your efforts on helping lead that and bringing that to fruition, so congratulations. We have the motion, a second. Any further discussion? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Wilkie.
Yes.
Trustee Finley.
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez.
Yes.
Trustee Maleta.
Yes.
Trustee Williams, yes.
Next, we have the approval of contract for Portage High School with Solution Tree for IT Power School renewal.
So this is the agreement for Portage High School staff to work with David LaRose, who is from Solution Tree for a response to intervention professional development. The cost for four sessions is $7,200, and ESSER funds will be utilized. This does also go along with our required 20% set aside for learning loss, is going to be my anticipation, because it's specifically responding to those students in academic need. Power School also with SIS is a student information, or is it Student Information System renewal. This is a one-year renewal with a cost of $42,936.96 to be used with funds outside, out of the operations fund. And hosting the renewal service, a one-year renewal, will cost $28,118.46, also out of the operations fund. I just want to mention that when we did work with PNW and they did a cybersecurity audit, the fact that we do have our information hosted outside of the district is something that was, something that they wanted to mention, that we should continue to prioritize. And when you're considering the cost of that renewal and the additional security that that provides to our student information system, as well as our employee access center, it's well worth it.
Thank you. Do you have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Red motion, a second. Any discussion or questions? Here, none, call the roll, please.
Trustee Finley.
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez.
Yes.
Trustee Maleta.
Yes.
Trustee Williams, yes. Trustee Wilkie.
Yes.
Next, we have our approval of the overnight field trip from 329 through 42, 2023, to Florida by Portage High School.
So this trip was originally brought before you in 2019 to take place in 2020, and I think we all know why that did not occur. This is a field trip during spring break, so it does not impact instructional time. Mrs. Melissa Bowers, who is a Portage High School teacher, will be facilitating this trip through World Stride's educational tours. Again, the trip does take place over spring break. Those individuals who will be chaperoning are those who have an approved background check in our Safe Higher Solutions System, and those, and again, that would just be for those who do have the background checks back in time. We highly anticipate all parents will have theirs back in time, but regardless, in the event that they do not have theirs back in time, they are only going on the trip with their individual child, and those students will not be divided up amongst anyone who does not have a secure background check.
Great, thank you. Do you have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
You have a motion, a second. Any discussion or questions? Here, none, call the roll, please.
Trustee Vasquez.
Yes.
Trustee Maleta.
Yes.
Trustee Williams, yes. Trustee Wilkie.
Yes.
Trustee Finley.
Yes.
Okay, next, we have our approval of course proposals, 7144 Business Office Communications, 3092 Advanced Science Special Topics, 1538 Crimes of the 20th Century, 1538 Mythology. Do we have a motion to approve?
President Maleta, I'm sorry, there's one additional at the bottom here.
Oh, I didn't see that one. 7174 Understanding Diversity. Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve. Second.
You have a motion, a second. Any questions or discussion? Here, none, call the roll, please.
Trustee Maleta.
Yes.
Trustee Williams, yes. Trustee Wilkie.
Yes.
Trustee Finley.
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez.
Yes.
Okay, most we'll move on to our superintendent updates. Dr. Allen.
Just to share, Dr. Stevens and I have started our meetings with our district directors and principals, just to review the status of their goals, to see how we can best support them, and also reviewing their points of need, as well as success, just continuing to be celebrating what's working and making adjustments with things that may not. We also met today to review our ESSER spending, and we are making sure that we have our set aside, as I mentioned, that 20%, making sure that that allocation is still set to appropriately match that 20% for the required learning loss expenditures, which leads me also to share that we did, along with President Maleta, Maria Bravo, Assistant Director for Finance, and Nick Cron, our CFO, met and had a very successful audit. Our ESSER spending is directly in alignment with what those expenditures are appropriate to be, and we had two very minimal findings that were just a matter of us making certain paperwork during the time of COVID was still in place, even though we were not necessarily in school. But again, we, that's no longer an issue, and all things were great, the review itself. Strategic planning meeting, March 21st, tomorrow, right here in this room, 4:30, there will be light meal provided, and then at 5:00, we will begin with both internal and external stakeholders, just to the community. We'll be working on short-term priorities, long-term goals, considering inclusive perspectives with various stakeholder groups, providing direction and momentum in the district, and updates to the community will be forthcoming as this process unfolds, and also a survey, not just for our parents to take, but also for other outside community members, business owners, and those various perspectives. We are really encouraging everyone, when that survey is released, to participate. I also wanted to share that we are currently working with the Service Center. Dr. Stevens has worked along with Mrs. Williams and I. We're working to set up some additional training for literacy regarding the science of reading, not only following the legislation, but just making certain that we're on top of the most, the leading research of what's, what's changing in our educational world for our students. April 7th is our makeup day for all students. This was shared on March 17th, on Friday, through parent squares, if parents were notified, as were our employees. This will be a synchronous learning day. Synchronous as in they will be on half the time, because we do have one remaining asynchronous day where there is no requirement to be online live, and that will be for Election Day, because as you recall, we, on those synchronous days, we typically are bringing students into the building, our elementary students. So we flipped that, they are going to stay home this time on April 7th, and be live for half of the day, so that then we can preserve that last date for the primaries. Also, just wanted to share with you that President Maleta and I reached out to Portage Youth Basketball. We did have a very productive and collaborative meeting with members of their board, and shared some of, some, some opportunities to further our partnership, and also work alongside them, and just kind of answer some questions that they had at this point in time. Again, we look forward to collaborating and continuing a healthy relationship with them, but I did at least want you to know, because I know there were some concerns, as, as we did here in the community, that there was a consideration that they may not be able to, to open their doors. I do know that they shared with us that they had a very healthy fundraiser here recently, and we are working on some potential fundraising opportunities for them that we were working on even right after the holiday in January, and then kind of had to, had to step aside for that due to the date available, so we're working through that. And one last thing, just to share with you, as I had shared at the start of the school year, Educators Preparing Inspired Change, which is epic, it is a group of superintendents across the state of Indiana, there's about 25 or 30 of us, and so this is a partnership between the Indiana Association of Public School Superintendents and Butler University. The graduation for that, I was fortunate enough to participate in epic this year, and I will be out May 4th for the certification and in Leadership Excellence, and there's a graduation ceremony that we've come together for, and then moving forward, that epic cohort from here to here to here stays connected. So it's been a great experience, it was six additional times down to Indianapolis, so that's a little bit tricky. One more time down there in April, and then that will all be shored up, but it was a great opportunity.
Great, thank you. Are there any items not on the agenda anyone would like to bring up?
Yes, I just want to share one thing, just briefly. March is Women's History Month, so I just wanted to say to all the ladies out there, celebrating and acknowledging all of the history and the things that we have been able to move forward with, and no offense to the guys, but, I mean, our leadership is phenomenal. But I wanted to say.
We love you all.
We love you too, we do, we love you too, but I just want to acknowledge that, because I don't think we lift ourselves up enough, given all the other things that we have to balance as wives, moms, and all the other fun stuff, and in leadership roles, as we all sit here and navigate, what we have to navigate as far as helping our community and kids.
Great, thank you.
I'd like to say something if I could.
Yeah, please.
So as many of you, many of you know, everybody up here knows, I recently retired from the police department, I have accepted a job down in Florida, so that is also going to require me to step down from this board. I don't leave until April, so I will step down then, but this is my last official meeting, so I just wanted to, you know, thank you all for this opportunity, I mean, the board, Attorney Elwood, Dr. Stevens, and specifically President Maleta, for his friendship and guidance, being on the board, and Dr. Allen, as her friendship and guidance. I've had a lot of personal experiences, professional experiences in life, and this is some of the most important work I think I've ever done, and being part of this board, and, you know, the friendships, the working atmosphere, everyone respected, everyone's opinion, it's valued, everyone has a voice, and that starts with leadership from Dr. Allen, as, and President Maleta, so again, I just, I thank you all for my time here, being able to just be a little part of us, so thank you.
Great, thank you. I'm not going to let you get off that easy, Trustee Williams, we do have a little statement we're going to read on your behalf. This evening, we celebrate Trustee Troy Williams. I'm going to change that from Trustee Troy Williams to Chief Troy Williams. Chief Troy Williams, as he has retired from the Portage Police Department, and will be moving out of the state to continue his law enforcement career. As such, this will be the final board meeting for Trustee, or Chief Williams, who has left an exceptional and long-lasting mark on Portage Township Schools. Chief Williams is a graduate of Portage High School, who returned to serve his community, and has accumulated a number of prestigious titles and awards that demonstrate his high level of commitment to Portage. His involvement with our school district goes beyond the boardroom, as he has served as a school resource officer at Portage High School, coached youth teams, sponsored Portage High School's Outstanding Young Man Program, assisted with the Distinguished Young Woman Program, and protected our community through his service with the Portage Police Department. During his tenure on the board, Chief Williams has played an integral role in the development of our school district, in particular, the several large-scale construction projects to include our renovated East Pool, district-wide library renovation project, and the new Lavenda Learning Lab at Portage High School. Serving as a board member is not a simple or easy task, but Chief Williams has grown into this role and has served in such a way that our students, staff, and community will feel the impact of his work for years to come. On behalf of the Portage Township School Board of Trustees, we would like to thank Trustee Williams for his service to this board and the entire Portage Township community. Thank you, and good luck in your future endeavors. We do have a little something, momentum from the school administration and the board for you, and maybe after me, we can get a picture with you, and that, I'd like to present that to you.
That's amazing.
I'd like to just add, I know this could not have been an easy decision for you to leave the city that you love, and you've served for so long. It is a loss for our community. Your impact will be forever remembered. I mention Chief Williams because the eight years that you served as chief of police of Portage will never be forgotten. You are part of our history. The city and community of Destin is very fortunate to gain you and your family. We will miss you, and congratulations.
I'd also like to congratulate, congratulate you on your new chapter. Your presence and your perceptive views made an incredible impact on this board.
So I mean, so you're connected to all of this and everything that we've done, and we know that you have been committed to this community. And for that, I say thank you for your leadership. Thank you just for everything that you've done to be able to help us get, guide and navigate the situations that we're in right now, and I say thank you.
I appreciate that.
I just want to say it was a pleasure serving alongside of you for the city of Portage for many years, and to be able to call you my friend and then serving with you on this board. I'm very happy for you. I'm very sad, boo, I keep saying boo because you're leaving, but I'm very happy for you. Congratulations.
I'd also like to acknowledge Mrs. Williams, number one, she's very, I know that, you know, serving on the board took some time away from being with you and your family, but so we also wish you very good, and thank you for serving our students for so many years as well.
I think just a couple of things to share. You know, I think back to our SRO conflict and what that was all about, and the whole idea is we were two passionate leaders in the school district, in this community, who love our kids and want to do everything we can to serve and protect them, and that never was at all something that either one of us doubted in each other's situations. I always appreciated that thereafter, as before, we were always able to come together and make decisions that were right for kids. Even when disagreements occurred, it was still with the best of intentions to meet the needs of our community. And what I would just like to say is I think this is a prime example of how when we're in leadership roles, to respect each other and to have that mutual foundation of respect is such a priority because there were a lot of people who didn't think we could work together. And not only were they incorrect in that, but it, it never stifled us because, again, the focus was on our students regardless of where we were on, on that issue. And so I just want to mention how much I appreciate your integrity, your friendship, your collaborative spirit, and just always being able to see what's best for our students and, and knowing that we might get there in different ways, but in the end, we were all with the best of intentions going to get there. And although I still have Carrie for another couple of months at least, you know, you will definitely be missed. Carrie was a new teacher in the district when I was a part of the Thespians, and it, you know, just going back a lot of years and a lot of students and families that you've influenced as well, Carrie, you'll be greatly missed too.
One more thing, just to that point, the things you brought up, I couldn't agree more, and for any angst I might have caused you in the past, I do apologize.
Thanks.
Well, so as a matter of procedure, we, until we get trustee Williams's letter of resignation and that final date, at that time, for those who are wondering what happens with his seat, attorney Elwood and I will get together, we'll lay out the timeline and the procedure, we'll communicate that not only to the board but to the community, and we'll begin that process. So we've got some time on that as, till that point, but we'll make sure that that is fully communicated so everyone knows what those next steps are. Okay, with that, does anyone have anything else this evening? We do have some refreshments after the meeting to celebrate a good friend, trustee Williams, chief Williams, I'm going to keep saying chief Williams until the day you leave. If, with that, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.